All right, welcome everyone. It's my great honor to call our first hybrid meeting, both Zoom and in-person, to order on June 3, 2020 at 6:05 PM. This is the new format, which will hold council going forward, COVID or not COVID, as it allows some flexibility. Essentially, people can come in Zoom, they can do their public comments through Zoom or in person. We do have a limited number of participant seats here in person due to COVID, but you're welcome to attend in person or on Zoom. Same is true for counselors. Bear with us, this is our first meeting, so we may have to work out some of the bugs here. I'd also like to say, for those who are wondering, it is somewhat warm today in Dunsmere, but the 90-degree breeze is very pleasant at this exact moment, and it's a true joy to be here in person. Councilman Art, would you like to lead us to the flags?
Yes, sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is founded on one nation under God, indivisible, with the key and justice for all.
Hi, we have a roll call.
Here.
She's asking for Councilmember Deutsch.
Here. I can't hear her for some reason.
Yeah, Wendy's not near a microphone.
I'm here.
There is a...
Councilmember Deutsch.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilwoman Lucasey.
Present.
And myself is also present. So for special presentations and announcements, we had agenda as recognition of Kathleen Shirley for her project at Dunsmere Elementary School.
I'm going to table it.
Unfortunately, she is unable to attend this evening, either through Zoom or in person because of eighth grade graduation. So, yeah, I heard there's motion to table. I'm moved we postpone this until the next meeting where she can be in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to table this until she's available.
I'll second. I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. I know it wasn't in the agenda specifically, but it's partly public comment, partly special presentations. If there's any representative of the Railroad Days organization here, I would like them to have an opportunity to describe what they're going to be doing this coming weekend, because we won't have a city council meeting until after Railroad Day.
I believe Sandra Hood should be on the line waiting to give us a rundown.
Can you unmute Sandra or Tim Holt?
Oh, I've got to... Oh, it won't... Oh, there I am. Believe it or not, okay, this is Sandra Hood, Railroad Days president. So we have our event ready to open on Saturday, June 12. We will... So we have the, we have Little Engineer, we have the dedication for Locomotive 1727, we have craft fenders on Upper Pine Street, as we normally do. They will be there Saturday and Sunday. And they'll start setting up, though, at three, we allow many of them to set up at 3 o'clock, beginning 3 o'clock Friday, June 11. They will be out of that space Sunday, June, at 6 o'clock, Sunday, June 13. We have the parking lot north of City Hall set aside for our main entertainment. We're using the stage from Weed, their wonderful transformer stage, and we have a full listing of entertainment, local entertainment, coming up. Cedar Flat will be open. I heard from Blake that the Dunsmere Depot Museum will be open. Siskiyou Art Museum will be open. I just found out, though, today, that Show and Shine, we cannot put it down on Dunsmere Avenue on Sunday, because it's preferred that we only block Dunsmere Avenue between Pine and Cedar Street on Saturday and not do it on Sunday. So we're going to use the city parking lot, but I'm wondering, I'm just throwing it out there, possibly using Spruce Street, the way the farmer's market does on Thursdays, and use Spruce Street on Sunday, which would be from 10 to 5. And I'm just putting out that, you know, for consideration. We have our button raffle out there. If you haven't purchased your button, the parade is at noon. I have submitted a fairly detailed street and parking lot closure to Todd, and they sent off a copy. Hopefully, the sheriff got that copy. I think that's about it, unless you have questions.
The main question, thank you, Sandra, would be, where do we find a full itinerary for Railroad Days?
I can send you a full itinerary. I can drop copies off. Our formal program won't be printed. I won't have copies of the formal program until Tuesday, but I can certainly give you a hard copy. It's, it just won't be pretty.
Okay, no worries, but it'll be in the paper, no doubt, on Wednesday?
Oh, yes, it will definitely be in the paper. I'm submitting it. I've already called Mount Chester Herald. They always print it in the paper. Of course, we pay for the ad. They put it in the paper, and, like I said, when we get the full program, which will be Tuesday, I'll have those available also. And we also have those available during the event.
Um, question?
Councilman Kaiser?
Yes, Ms. Sandra, it's a shame that you can't get the car show on Dunsmere Avenue on Sunday. That seems like it would be an awesome event, beans it sounds like the car show is one of the highlights this year. We, it sounds like you're at a decision point and a dilemma point. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if, can council, Todd's on the phone, can, can we tell her that she could have her car show on Spruce Street? Could that happen here? Like you said, sir, it's a week away, and we're here to help any way we can make this event a citywide, big, nice bit. And she's kind of strapped to, when it's in the parking lot up there, it kind of sucks, because the wall, there's no wind, there's... But a Spruce Street would be a much better thing. We, you know, it's kind of like right there, top of the, top of the hill. I don't know, anybody else want to chime in here?
Well, I'm, I'm sure we can work something out, but we do have a great deal of water infrastructure projects that might take precedence. So why don't we just have Sandra work with city manager and find a good solution?
Okay. Oh, and I also want to mention, we will have children's activities this year. The Kids Zone will be in the Children's Park. Revive Church has decided to host that as their sort of outreach to the community that they're here to help. So we do have someone...
Question?
Yes.
Councilman Deutsch.
Sandra, have we lined up adequate support, safety support for the evening, from Saturday to Sunday for the craft people that'll, or I'm sorry, Friday to Saturday for the craft people?
Um, well, I know, I know Sergeant Kubowitz said there, you know, there are some patrols going by. We do have a couple of vendors who camp out in their spot, or they, so they're always on the lookout.
They would sound the alarm, they would sound the alarm if there was a problem.
Right, right, yeah. It's, it's sort of different than having your fairgrounds that's fenced off, you know, it's...
Yeah, exactly.
But we have a couple of vendors who, whenever they come, they, they stay in that spot. That's, they camp out for the weekend.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the update, and we're looking forward to the event that'll celebrate the heritage of our River Canyon.
Leather Rucker Show, Peter raised his hand. Oh, we don't have to do that part, that's right, sir.
Well, one more question. I think the 1727 project is a fantastic exercise in community support to keep alive our railroad heritage. So when you said there's going to be a dedication, which day is that going to be and what will it look like?
Okay, Cheryl Pitti has planned the dedication to Locomotive 1727 on Saturday, June 12, at 10:00 AM, down there, of course, right in front of 1727. Tim Holt's going to be the MC. She has been trying to get some music there and some other rail foamers, train, you know, the foamers there to either talk about railroad history. I haven't heard from her in a while, because it was something she was trying to get people to commit to. But anyway, the dedication is at 10:00 AM, Saturday, June 12, right in front of Locomotive 1727.
If I could help with the music and, but I hope it'd be a substantial dedication to Dunsmere's railroad past, as we redefine the event going forward, it's a big doubt, and I'm very efficient, so thank you.
Okay, I missed part of that, Peter.
Well, I'm simply saying, for the Railroad Days of the past, we had vintage railroad station participation, we had the cars themselves, we had Amtrak. We're not having any of that this year. But when I drove by, the restored 1727, lit up, fenced, it's a real badge of honor for our community and our heritage. So I want to support for this year's Railroad Days, highlighting that we are cognizant of our past. Thank you.
Right on, right on.
Good.
Thank you so much for that, we really appreciate it, and look forward to seeing you at Railroad Days weekend after this coming weekend.
Okay, I hope to see you all there. Check in at the information booth. Oh, and don't forget to buy your Railroad Days button. We have some great raffle prizes.
Yes, ma'am.
Where can one purchase said buttons?
Right now, they are at Unexpected Treasures and at the Dunsmere Hardware Shop. We used to have a number of places, other places, we're trying to find, or if I'm in the chamber, you can come and buy one from me in the chamber.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'll now open up a general public comment section. It's the time for any member of the public to come up and make a public comment on any item that's not on the agenda, or any item that is on the consent agenda. So the consent agenda this time is the check registry for the last two weeks, and the resolution to ban fireworks within the city limits. Let's start with in-person, if anyone would want to come up here who's in-person. I've come to the podium, you'll be allowed three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name, my name is Dwight Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. And I'm here to congratulate this body for meeting in person again. It's been a long time, and I'm glad to see it. Although it does bring up, in my mind, some issues of how this is going to run in the future and what it is going to run in relationship to, say, the Brown Act. Government is ran by the people who showed up. The people on the line have showed up, the people in this room have showed up. You are the government, that is where it is, and that's where it shall be. In saying that, there are certain things in government, like it requires four, two-thirds of your vote for the city council for matters of monetary things. Quite often, you see in the agenda, they say four-fifths vote required. That's not the law, the law is two-thirds. Most bodies tend to be five-member boards, not seven members, needing that fourth person to agree. My question is, is that government is by the strong, because we are required to be here with the Zoom and the technology that we have today, I find a major conflict. I have seen meetings over the last year where people have testified on building permits and things from Portland and various places. I have seen votes taken where people are in, they're obviously not in the county. The fact is, what is the, my question is, how in the relationship to the Brown Act are we going to require this? For example, if there was not a quorum tonight, you could not normally have a vote. You would table that until the next time. Well, now with the Zoom and the hybrid situation, it is possible that if somebody's not on the line, that we quickly call them on the phone, and we can get that vote. To get that fourth, fourth member to vote on a major's importance, I would like to see that we conduct business in somewhat the old way, that if we're going to make major decisions, that there be a quorum within the physical body, or that we know that we have dealt with the Brown Act issues, okay? Because it is, there are many Brown Act issues that come to play in each and every one of these meetings, and I am a Brown Act supporter, and I will be on your butt if the Brown Act is not followed. If it is, you will be, I will be your best friend. But I would like to know and have some of this guidelines that I can understand what we are doing forward.
Thank you so much, well said.
I can address that if you would like.
We're not allowed to.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Well, at the end of public comment, you can address it, Todd. Thank you so much for your public comment tonight. All right, I don't see any further public comment within the room. So on Zoom, if anyone would like to make public comments, please either go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand function, or if you're calling in, hit star nine, if you'd like to make a public comment.
Doesn't look like we have any hands on this side.
All right. Give it one more second, if there's still none. I'll now close the public comment section for this evening, the general public comments. But thank you so much for your public comment. My understanding is, rather suddenly, last April, due to his emergency powers, Governor Gavin Newsom suspended the in-person requirement on the Brown Act. That suspension covers hybrid meetings now as well. And so we're kind of working that out at the state level. On the League of California Cities, we'll probably have a lot of guidelines that one could look into, just at their website, if you wanted to see that. But I think Todd can speak more specifically to what our process and procedure is going to look like. And it is going to evolve in that we'll get better at this. Use it as a tool, have a stronger, more participatory government, not a weaker, in-the-dark government. So I applaud that significantly at least.
So my, my two cents on this is, while the governor has, you know, released a proclamation that we're back generally on the 15th, he has extended the restrictions on the Brown Act to allow hybrid meetings indefinitely. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Could somebody tell me the gentleman's name that just spoke?
Dwight Bailey.
Dwight, Mr. Bailey, this big David, I want you to know, sir, that if, if this meeting, if there was something that was precedence, I would be there in person. I always have, I've only missed three meetings in almost 10 years. I, I've been working in the sun, I actually came home about 2:30 today, because I couldn't take it no more. I'm in my air conditioning front room, right here in Dunsmere. You come to my house, sir, 4829 Siskiyou Avenue, but I couldn't come out. And the mayor opened the meeting, said that this lovely 90-degree breeze feels good. I can't take it, I'm just hot. So I apologize, because I've been a bit advocate for let's get back to normal. I promise, I don't care what it is, I'll be at the next meeting. I, I just didn't have it in me tonight, sir. I apologize.
Councilman Kaiser, no need to apologize. Hopefully, this hybrid model is continued in a reasonable manner, such that if a councilman, a woman is sick, they don't have to come in here and infect all the participants, but they can still be heard and participate in the important issues. So I think it's good, this is going to strengthen us in the long run. But let us move on.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bailey does have a point. If there was something that is very precedence, I believe that a quorum should be there in that room. That's what I wanted to tell him. And I think we all agree on that. If there was something very pressing, we should show up to vote on that, if, you know...
Well, I think it's, it's, it's not on the agenda tonight. It was on the agenda the last two meetings to discuss the format here, et cetera. Great public comments, especially when it comes down to the legal framework. But, you know, this is evolving situation, stay involved, and we'll certainly stay compliant, and hopefully it'll all work out for the best. Cool. Now, let's move forward into council and staff comments. City manager, would you like to begin?
Sure. So, first thing off is, we don't have this on the agenda, kind of came in late. I just want to let you all know that we posted for a public meeting for tonight, for pub, you know, for public comment.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, right, to look at ways that we are planning to take our program income and leverage it for planning dollars through the CDBG program to, we're working through a number of possibilities. One is working on a downtown economic revitalization plan coupled with in a, basically, the ability to expand staff strength and hire somebody to do direct, well, first do a public meeting with members of the public to understand what kind of businesses we want here, and to do direct, based on that, do direct retail outreach from, you know, an extensive list of folks that this company has contacts with to see if we can expand our tax base and bring more business in. On top of that, there are a couple of things that we've been kicking around that we can use program income that came in this year, and those include looking at fixing the bleachers at, you know, at the park, potentially expanding Hedge Creek Parking and, and potentially metering it, so we get turnover.
Ooh, yeah.
Rebooting, you know, re-roofing the library is another opportunity, and also help for the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. So that's one thing, so if anybody wants to comment during a, you know, to the public hearings, this, please do.
Essentially, if you want to open a public hearing at some point, Matthew.
Yeah, I was briefed that we were going to be adding this. Let's open the public hearing at item nine, where it says public hearing none, but we'll substitute it with that public hearing information.
Well, technically, it wouldn't be considered a public hearing under the Brown Act unless it was actually on the agenda. So even though you noticed it, it has to be listed on the agenda clearly what the item is. So you wouldn't necessarily be able to claim it as a valid public hearing. So I don't know what the matter conditions are of the public hearing, if it's just general outreach and public input, you know, and you don't need that official public hearing, then I, you know, having it as a general public comment is fine. But again, you can't legally call it a public hearing unless it's actually noticed on the agenda and the public notice. I just, I don't want to stand to a procedural issue.
Yeah, we did hear from HCD that we could go this route, but there will be, just as well, there will be resolutions next meeting, and we didn't feel like throwing those on, and there still is plenty of time. So if we officially do want to have a, so, so essentially, we can have a public hearing if anybody wants to comment right now. If anybody saw the posting outside and wants to comment, I think it's totally completely fine to hear that now, but also up to council, any other matters.
I would, I would also say we would have to have a unanimous vote to put it onto the agenda, even for a public hearing that is an official, right?
I'm not sure what the protocols are off the top of my head, but yeah, if it's, if it's fine with HCD and it doesn't interrupt anything, and thank you, Blake, for the explanation. I just want to make sure people have a chance to talk about it, you know, and may have been confused and not seen on the agenda, maybe they thought it got rescheduled, so.
I think as long as...
I move we amend the agenda, I move we amend the agenda to include this as a public hearing.
Well, before you go too far, we don't need to do that, I don't think, Bruce. And Quentin is on the line, too, he's got his hand raised there, if you want to unmute him. But that's up to council or the mayor.
Yes, credit.
Hey, guys, good to hear from all you. So, so yeah, Blake, Blake was correct that we did reach out to HCD about the little hiccup, because it did stay on the public notice that was June 3. So basically, what we were going to do was to just talk about it, was to just bring it up to the public, so, so they're aware of it, so in case anyone who saw the public notice didn't come here and say, hey, what the heck, you know, I thought we were going to talk about this. But there's not going to be any action items or anything, so, you know, as long as the, as long as the hearing or pseudo-hearing, whatever you'd want to call it, remains open, folks can submit comments to the city in the lead-up. But then, at your next meeting on the 17th, you would want to, you know, make sure on the agenda that it is like a CDBG public hearing, and then any kind of resolutions or anything would obviously have, have to be on there. So it's sort of just like opening up the discussion to sort of solicit community impact or community input, and sort of, you know, get some potential projects, you know, out there on everyone's radar, so, so folks are more informed. But since, you know, no actual action items are going to be taken, it doesn't derail any of the project timelines or affect any of the deadlines, so, so it's a happy accident.
This is a community input support pro, but item.
Essentially, yeah, yeah, it's to, you, we want to make sure that the folks at Dunsmere are aware of this, and especially for any folks who esteem the public notice that had said June 3, just to sort of cover our bases on that.
Correct, and I would be fine seconding Councilmember Deutsch's motion to add it to the agenda. I would just, just to be kosher, add it to new business and not public hearing, because again, I don't want anyone to go and see public hearing, and then go, you didn't do this.
I will amend mine.
Okay, cool.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, against? Motion carries unanimously. I'll place the public notice discussion for the CDBG program on item 11A, new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, city manager, do you have any further comments this evening?
Yeah, just a quick rundown of some stuff. There's a lot going on we've got to get done in June. We start negotiating the solid waste contract. Our first solid waste ad hoc committee meets next week. We need to determine from the feds, and it looks like that finally we've got some release, you know, on guidance for not entitlement cities, which are cities under 50,000, on how we access our federal stimulus dollars, and that's going to be at part of, you know, Cal Cities, or California League of Cities briefing next week. We, you know, we need to, you know, to let the folks that have EDBG loans that were allowed to forego them during COVID, let them know on June 15th we'll start paying them again. And our Public Works Director, Bill, who served us admirably for 30-plus years, he just kind of dropped a bombshell and let us know he's leaving by the end of June, so we have to figure out how to scramble to put somebody else in place. Let's see, anything else? There's, oh, and we've got to get working through with Caltrans on the relocation of water lines on the bottom side of the deck of the 800-foot bridge. And finally, you see all the new water lines going in around town. The, the rate increases directly led to all of the work that's being done that you're seeing out there now.
Runway?
Oh, and we've got a great contractor up at the runway. We've got, you know, less than $5 million in federal money to completely reconstruct the runway. Our plan was to have it open by July 4, and it looks like, given how efficient our folks are out there, we're likely to be, you know, fully paved and striping and putting reflectors on by the end of the week, next week. you know, fully paved and striping and putting reflectors on by the end of the week, next week. And I sent out an email about having a groundbreaking in mid-June. I'm forgetting the date offhand.
Twenty-third.
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 Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, City Manager. Finance Director?
All right. Not much to report, but I do want to just say a big thank you to Siskiyou Media Council and, and Paris and crew for the setup that we see here. There, for those on Zoom, you guys are on a television set inside city chambers or council chambers. We have audio hookup that seems to be doing good. So just a big shout out to Siskiyou Media Channel.
And thank you all the staff at the city for putting this together as well, testing the technology.
Indeed. Yes. All the rest of the staff was great. I did nothing. All the rest of the staff was awesome. So thank you guys.
Move on to council comments. Councilman Kaisler?
Thank you. I don't have a ton to report at this time. I think the only thing I didn't hear Todd mentioned was he was able, we had one outstanding item for the Children's Park acquisition and improvement. And he was able to finish that item. So we've got all of our second round edits into the state and we're just waiting for a contract agreement and the go ahead to start the acquisition process, which will be awesome for Children's Park. So that's been the main one. And then just working with the, continuing the conversation with the Trails Association to see what the best option is for the Mossbury Falls Hedge Creek area, talking about, you know, different grants that are available. Trying to look at what the last pieces for the trail environmental documents are there. So just kind of figuring out, you know, some last minute things to make sure we're ready to go as soon as possible. Todd's been working really hard to meet with Union Pacific. And so, you know, we're still really hopeful moving forward and the engineers at Union Pacific are doing a second review of the engineering documents. And have said that once we get done with the engineer review, they will send over a draft lease and we can start lease agreement proceedings. So that's chugging along at a slow pace, but it's, it's moving. So we're hopeful on that. I think the only other reminder is we've got a finance committee meeting on Monday. So we haven't had one since last meeting. So I won't report on anything. So four o'clock on Monday, if anyone would like to join us via Zoom, I don't know if we're going to go to hybrid for that meeting as well. Blake would know how we want to do that moving forward. We haven't had a discussion yet. And I think that's about it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I see that I forgot to call on Sergeant Kubowitz.
There you go.
It's okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, cool. I have nothing big to report. I have been working with Sandra regarding railroad days. We do have extra deputies on. They're going to be both on day shift and night shift. So we'll have everything ready for the parade and then for the amount of people that might come to railroad days. We're also helping out with the parade for the Dunsborough High School on tomorrow night. So that starts, I'm pretty sure at like 7:15. So there'll be a parade through town for the kids. And other than that, I think it's hot. I can see you guys are hot there at the council chambers. And, uh, and I had a good talk with Todd today and Blake, and I think they understand why. So hopefully we can work something out and things will be really pleasant and I hope the railroad days is successful for us. And Dunsmere and I hope it all goes smooth. And we do have a couple items in the parade for the sheriff's office. Sheriff Leroux is going to be attending. We also have two other entries in the parade. And so I've been working with Sandra and the California Highway Patrol is going to be assisting us with the parade detail. And so everything's going really smooth and it's working out pretty good.
Thank you so much, Sergeant Kubowitz. We really appreciate you being with us tonight. Are there any questions?
I have. Can you hear me Sergeant?
I can.
Yeah. Your last several reports, as I listen, it sounds like the sheriff's department is on a fairly regular basis, putting in more hours protecting Dunsmere than the contract provides for. Is this manageable under the current contract or is this an issue the city needs to deal with?
As of right now, when I looked at the last stats, we were at 117% over the contract. From what you guys, what I think Sergeant, now Lieutenant Wedstein and Captain Helpman and whoever was on the public safety committee, when you guys first negotiated the contracts for a lower hours, I think it's 14 hours per day, which we kind of split up between seven hours day, seven hours night. So yeah, we, we are over, I mean, we're like I said, I think 117%.
You mean 17% over?
Yeah, 17%. So the way I get my monthly stats is that our dispatch supervisor calculates the hours that our deputies throughout the county, when they're in Dunsborough city limits, they record and on a weekly basis, we have forms that we fill out to say, you know, what contract city we were in and how many hours we spent in that contract. So I get a report from him every month. And then I also double check that with a email to every deputy in our county, just to make sure that they understand that I have to go to a city council meeting, ask for stats because sometimes people can be late on their forms. And so an email, at least they can reply to me and check their forms on their drives on their computer. And then I get to me more of an accurate account for the hours that we patrol in Dunsborough.
Well, I mean, to me, thank you for the good faith from the sheriff's department, for the finance committee in the city. I'm guessing you're going to tell us this is not a trend that's going to go away that probably should be addressed in our budget.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think last negotiation, I think times are tough for Dunsborough. I, you know, I don't, I know COVID is not helping Dunsborough with, you know, tourism and getting money into Dunsborough. I know you guys know the county is not the richest county in the world. So, so, you know, contracts are good and sometimes we give and take. And I, you know, we're not going to stop patrolling Dunsborough. I mean, I'm down when I, you know, when I'm on day shift and you, you see my guys down there. We're, we're parking and we're talking with Chief Padilla and we're all, we're there as much as possible. I mean, if you look at it as a business standpoint, we're only required to be there seven hours for one shift and seven hours for another. So, but you know, it might be a couple of hours here, a couple of hours there. So it all works out. And I think, you know, this is part of the, we're, we're giving to, back to Dunsborough. Dunsborough has been a loyal contract for us. And, um, you know, sometime, I, I know in my sheriff's office history, you know, sometimes we've fell short of our contract hours for the city of Dunsborough. So maybe this is a way of paying you guys back.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for that. Moving back to council comments, Councilman Kaisler?
Yes, thank you. The first thing I want to do is back up a little bit and I want to say special thank you to both Blake and Quentin for that CYA move about the public comment. That was a big deal and I appreciate you guys looking out for this council. Another thing I'd like to mention that it is fire season. They talk about go bags. If you don't know what I'm talking about, I suggest you look into it. Just have your go bag ready. It'd be important documents, medications, things like that, that, that CalFire has a great list of things for your go bag. It's worth the, the time and the effort to look into it and it's definitely worth the effort to put one ready. Later on this evening, we're talking about green waste day discussions and I'm really looking forward to that because we need it. I want to say something that this year we're not going to have a soapbox jerseys. I've decided that the tires is such a hassle. So I'm looking into these water tubes that go along the sides of the street. They're fun. If you crash, water squirts. They're safer. It's funner. It's going to be bigger and better. And I'm going to try and collect handlebars for the next year. So I could put handlebars on all the soapbox cars to make them more controllabler. I, I really think it's going to be bigger and better. And you guys know me, I'm going to make that happen. I'd like for someone to tell me the time as far as the airport venue on the June 23rd. Nobody ever said a time. I'm looking forward to that.
10 a.m.
10 a.m.
Yes.
Thank you.
Where are your sunscreen?
Yeah. Speaking of sun, as a matter of fact, I've been driving through town just last two days and I happened to pick up a, we won't mention any names, but I picked up three elderly people that were on their way to the clinic or the grocery store and they almost didn't make it. So before you guys go on these adventures, there is the Mount Shasta taxi. There are friends to call, see if somebody's going that way, but don't go out for a hike with no water and find yourself in, in a bad situation. I'm, I'm very excited about the talks that we're having about the falls because I have some very major concerns. I don't know if anybody saw the traffic and the trash over this Memorial Day weekend, but it's time that we do something about it. We talked about meters. Meters is a form of revenue, which, you know, you talking about way to support the resource center. That could be one way in, in itself. And I would like to end with, I would like to congratulate Peter Ars because he put a little time, a little effort, a little bit of money. And with the help of a few of his friends, that pop sure looks good down there on Sacramento Avenue. I got to tell you. On that note, I hope everybody had a good and safe Memorial Day weekend and, and if you remember what it was about, I publicly thank all those that have served and sacrificed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Kaisler. Councilman Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to recognize Bill Callahan and his, his work with the, did I say that wrong? Our public works? I always get that last name wrong. Willman, Bill Willman. I'm sorry.
Bill Willman, yeah.
Bill Willman. I'm sorry. I just want to recognize his service and I've always appreciated his attitude of coming to work and his everything. So I know he's had some rough times and I, I know that probably contributed to the short notice, but I just wish him well and thank him for all his service. Coming up with Hedge Creek, that's been on my, Hedge Creek Falls, that's been on my mind a little bit here recently. One of the things that came to mind is the Rotary Club put, had a little station there, visitor station, collecting donations to help them through Hedge Creek Falls. And it was, you know, because the Rotary Club has been kind of taken that under its wing to help fix things up. And one of the things I heard out of that was just the amount of joy they had with interacting with all the tourists and sharing and going back and forth. And what that kind of reminded me is, is that Dunsborough, besides the COVID and the masks and everything else seems to be coming alive again. And I'm really appreciating the spirit of the community, both in the way we're doing things like the railroad days and working at Hedge Creek Falls and all the different things, the, the garden. I think we need to celebrate that going into the summer and appreciate that we're coming alive again. As for the graduation ceremony tomorrow, one of the things that I get to do as a member of the board of the COS Foundation is give out scholarships. And so tomorrow I'm going to be able to give out a scholarship to Sarah Davis. And it's exciting to be able to do that. And one of the things I learned when I was talking with Principal Keller is that, I don't know if you all realize it, and this is one of the things that motivates me more than anything else, to try and grow this city and find housing for more families. And that is that the graduating class this year will be nine students, nine. And of that, only three of those students had the 2.5 required to be able to get a scholarship. So that kind of sends a shiver. I know it's been a crazy year and, and the, the students that were struggling the most were probably the students that weren't able to make it or weren't deciding to go into the classroom. But we need to grow this city. This city needs families. It needs that sense of vibrancy. And so that's what keeps me going on this council is finding a way to make that happen. Finally, it was really exciting. I was able to go out to the runway, out to the airport and watch the first load of asphalt being laid. And I got a good tour of all the operation, got a sense to meet some of the folks and they're really a good group of people and the, the equipment they're using is, is the latest, status, greatest state of art. And we're getting an incredible deal out of that. My hope is that following this up, we'll be getting some fuel up there. So folks can come in and refuel and go home. But the interesting thing was when they were, that Wednesday, when I was out there, there were 30 trucks of asphalt coming up from Reading, making their way up the hill to dump their loads. And then the next day, 20. So about 50 different loads of asphalt from Reading came up the road here and dumped it at an airport. And on the 23rd, we'll get a chance to look at the finished product. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, colleagues, members of the public, I'd like to start out where Big Dave left off, that is, we've been through Memorial Day weekend, Veterans Day is coming up in November. For the reasons most of you know, I trooped to the Dunsborough Community Center on Memorial Day and sat all by myself on the bench, looking up at the flag. And for the effort to honor our veterans that started with former Mayor Kalisler, former Mayor Deutsch, I really hope, especially working with the Community Resource Center, that we put a little more oomph as a community behind honoring veterans. And we start to work out a program where we commit ourselves to honoring veterans on both Memorial Day for those who didn't come back and Veterans Day for those who did, but didn't come back as the same people. For those of you that are not here in our chambers, I build on what Blake said and thanking everybody. This is a very slick upgrade of our old chambers. I wish all of us were here tonight. The TV screen works beautifully. The audio works beautifully. And for the first run at a hybrid effort, as Mr. Bailey said, to conform with the goals of the Brown Act and public participation. This is an excellent start. Good job, everybody. We're going to adopt the minutes. The minutes already let us know that there will be a blessing of the Dunsborough Community Garden next week on the ninth at 10 o'clock. And then the next week on June the 17th, the Dunsborough Farmer's Market will open. And I want to credit Andrea Clarno and her team for doing their best to support local growers, for making affordable fresh food available to everybody in the community, to the Dunsborough Community Resource Center. It's a great deal. If you want to know how. If you want to know how well the farmers, or excuse me, the, uh. Community Garden is going, we now have 40 beds. And we have 40 sponsors. So we are doing our absolute best to raise our own money from the community to do good for the community. And I think this will be our best year ever. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Good job.
Yes. My comments, I, I guess it was recently brought home to me, um, in bullet point form. How much the city of Dunsmere is undertaking currently. And I know, you know, a, a lot of it's kind of small incidental stuff. Um, a lot of it's COVID related. It's a unique opportunity for current circumstances, but to my knowledge. Um, city manager at the head of all of these, but all of the staff has never been attempting to achieve so much in such a concentrated timeframe. So I want to thank all the staff that's achieving that. This is truly monumental for our town. And tell the members of the public to expect real progress in the coming years based off of. Um, the seeds we're planting now. So, uh, thank you, guys.
You're here.
I'd also like to, uh, welcome Summer here with everyone who came early this year. I, I myself have been swimming in our lovely river already, um, almost every day, cool off. Um, I just want to remind everyone to appreciate that we live in the most beautiful area in the world. It's beautiful town, um, but also to respect the river, um, myself and other counselors. I know I've had friends taken by the river. Um, it's a powerful force of nature to be enjoyed, respected. Uh, but let's all stay safe this summer at the river and enjoy going off as much as possible and catching fish, right, Big Day?
Big fish.
So it's.
Big, big fish. Hey, but not only the rivers, but the lakes as well. If you guys are going to go out, be safe.
You're going to leave Dunsmere for the lakes, Big Day? All right, uh, that's all I have for tonight. Um, I look forward to, uh, moving forward with all these projects we have going. Let's move into committee reports. Were there any committees that met since our last meeting? I know finance did not.
No.
Did the solid waste ad hoc begin their work?
We had to reschedule and we are now meeting on the ninth of June. And Todd and the staff prepared. A package for us that has the entire. Response from those who wanted to provide solid waste services, including Clement. I was hoping that Wendy's notes from the prior meetings on the scope of our work would be distributed as well, but we're ready to go.
Excellent. Um, did the sewer wastewater rate study committee proceed?
Uh, no, I, Blake, what date was that we had? Was it the 18th?
Um, I.
Blake?
The, uh, 15th.
15th, I'm sorry. So it's the 15th.
Okay. All right, um. Then I assume the airport committee is kind of on hold till the completion of the runway.
Yeah.
I'll wait for Juliana to answer that question, I assume. Yeah.
Do you say that again? I mean, we have not, yeah, we have not scheduled an airport meeting if that's what is being asked.
What, is there any plan to? Work on the airport in its new form? Um, the interest within the committee, I guess, had that question. Given that they're getting a brand new runway, has there been any? Feedback that, hey, we need to. Band together and form some group to do something from the pilots?
I'm sorry.
Anyone answer?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not. I know at our last meeting, we only had one pilot attend where we talked about the runway reconstruction. The apron project and we, I believe, touched on one of the future projects, which was, uh, the taxiway. Is that correct, Councilmember Deutsch?
Right.
Um, so we did, we only had one pilot show up for that, but that would, you know, our next airport meeting, I believe, would be in July. If we're following the quarterly schedule, we would probably bring up some of our future. Potential projects at that time and what other grants we're pursuing. Um, cause I know Heath, um, and Carol are looking at another no match grant to do some of the other improvements that we've talked about.
Okay, thank you so much for that. So let's move forward to item seven.
Well, I, I just want to say. Now that I'm no longer on the finance committee and I don't know how the mayor feels no longer leading the finance committee. But I did think we had an agreement. Based on the strong urging of Charlie, our independent auditor. It was his observation that the city council is somewhat distanced from the. Dynamic nature of our budget. And that we as a city council on a quarterly basis or a bi-monthly basis. We're going to have a transparent update on the budget and how we're doing. And my question is, is that abandoned or is the finance committee going to do this?
Well, if you recall, Councilman Art. Um, we did do a major update in January at the midyear.
Right.
Based on finance committee recommendations. And, um, so we're not doing it quarterly, but we're a bi-annual and a very large update. Somewhat traditional to our old budgetary proceedings, especially because at this point in June, we, even with the two-year budget, we add the next year. Um, I believe finance committee is considering the full budget on Monday.
Yeah, I was going to say, uh, Peter, if you want to attend on Monday, we also have agenda is just a recap of where we're at with the audit recommendations.
Uh, the idea is to share it with the public to be transparent. And I didn't think, I never agreed to twice a year. I think quarterly is minimal and bi-monthly is much better.
And again, the, the finance committee meetings are Brown Act committee meetings. So all of the information in our packets, which includes an update on the budget are available ahead of time. So if anyone. That information, it is available.
But that puts the burden on the citizen.
All right, um. So moving forward to item seven, approval of the minutes for May 20th meeting.
I'm making a motion to approve. The minutes.
All right, um, motion, Councilman Kaisler. Taken by our.
Sure.
Sure.
All right, uh, any questions regarding the minutes? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, let's move into the consent agenda this evening. We have item A, check record screen for May 15th through May 28th. And a resolution, uh, 2021 08 to vampire works within city limits.
Motion to approve consent agendas, items A and B as presented.
Motion to adopt, you mean?
Yeah, motion to adopt the consent agenda, items A and B as presented.
Then I second.
All right, uh, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Well, discussion.
Aye.
Well, my only concern is whoever drafted this resolution did an exceedingly good job. There's, there's one little edit where instead of safe and sane fireworks. It says something else, but I do hope the city bends over backwards to publicize. That we're serious, whether it's the fire department or the sheriff's office. Please do not set Dunsmere on fire over the Fourth of July weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Peter.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. So we'll skip over item nine, remove the public hearing to item 11 and proceed to item 10. Old business. Uh, let's begin with item A, American Passenger Rail Association seeking input from the public on potential, potential improvements to passenger rail service to Dunsmere.
Yeah, so I requested this at the last, uh, meeting. I was contacted by the National Railway Association, um, and they're requesting cities that are. Um, serviced by passenger rail to, uh, advocate for improvements for their area and send a letter to the association that they can include with their political. Um, priorities advocating for passenger rail. Uh, the other thing too is since we're going to put this together, I figured whatever notes we come up with or things we'd like to do, put it in a letter. Um, that we can put on, uh, letterhead and also send to state and federal representatives. Um, just to reiterate, you know, our. Position on different passenger rail programming and services. Um. I think it's a really important thing. It's a really unique thing about Dunsmere as opposed to anywhere else in Siskiyou County. The fact that we have an Amtrak station. Um, still operating. I know last year or at least two years ago with the previous, uh, federal administration. Uh, they were looking at cutting Amtrak services and times, and I think it's a unique opportunity for us to keep that option. Um, especially with more interest in, uh, passenger rail as being an option for us. And again, just, you know, going back to one of our other discussions, we do actually have a lot of commuters in the city of Dunsmere. Um, and if passenger rail does get more fully funded, you know, the possibilities of having a more consistent service to other regions could be something that we can use for tourism. Um, we could use as commuter rail, um, if that's something that happens in the future. So I just figured it, it's an item we haven't really discussed in depth and it's not something that we ourselves. You know, have a ton of ability to do with our own funding, but you know, it'd be, it's a good opportunity to talk about it and hopefully, you know, iterate, you know, the city's position on the future of passenger rail.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Juliana, I am so confused. I have nothing in my packet. I don't understand exactly what it is that. We're striving for here, what we're trying to accomplish other than. To support them, we, we, we all, we know that we could, they got needs. They've had needs for a while. What is it exactly? That. You need?
So, yeah, so basically the National Passenger Rail Association is just looking for input from the city of Dunsmere that they can include in comment letters to Congress for funding. Um, but one of the things they also recommended, since we would be going through and saying, you know, yes, we would like to keep like. Whatever people's input is on the service or the Amtrak station itself. What improvements could happen? Um, and we can also take those and put them on city of Dunsmere letterhead as well and send them as, you know. Um, letters to our federal and state, um. Congressmen and, um. Assembly men and women, um, for that.
So, so.
Basically input on what we'd like to see for the, the train, the passenger train station and the service.
So that, 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 that being the question, what the question is, is we're seeking consent for council. To approve the mayor to write letter. In. In behalf of Dunsmere in support of this program. Is that what we are? Cause that's the only thing I see.
So this would just be a general open conversation and, and what people would like to see and give the public a chance to make a comment on it. And then I'll take notes and then send for the next packet on the consent agenda or another open item, the actual language on the letter. So we'll see the letter before it goes out.
Okay, excellent. On, on that note, now we know, um. Should we open this one up for public comments? Um, now and get feedback and then we can continue the discussion.
Good idea.
Sure.
So, um, I'm going to open this up to public comments. Who would like to make a comment? They can either come to the podium. Or if you're in Zoom, go to the participants tab and hit the raise your hand function. Or if you're calling in, I hit star nine and they'll raise your hand.
So I don't think anyone else got an email, but I did get an email letter. But I don't see any public comments on the Zoom.
All right, uh. See none. Could you read the, uh, letter or summarize it at the very least?
Sure, I'll just read a small portion. Um, this is from Herbert Allen McLean. Um, he, uh, he said for the next 10 years, he'd like to seek support for the concept and implementation of electrification of state-funded trains. Support for passenger rail development in the North State and in partnership with Oregon. A daylight express from Sacramento to Eugene, um, average speed en route to compete with interstate highway speeds along with regional commuter trains on the same lines. Um, I'm an active user of the Amtrak, having traveled to the West Coast destinations across the county to Washington DC. I've also. A member of the National Association of Rail Passengers, have traveled throughout Europe. Uh. Pass, train travel specifically on electric nines, uh, should be a major component for our transportation infrastructure. Um, and as an alternative to vehicle travel. Um, he has just like some bullet points at the top as well, but just basically asks for an upgrade of the. Um, Amtrak station for the city of Dunsmere similar to. Sorry, I'm trying to paraphrase. Oh, similar to Reading Chico and, uh. Oregon. I apologize if I didn't say that right. Um, but just improving the station in general.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It, it seems to me that the, I'd like to be the first one to bring this up and obviously we'd like to have not just a nighttime train stopping in, but a daytime train. So if nothing else, if we were to put that out from our standpoint, and then I think the other aspect to this, uh, Juliana, if I'm wrong, is that. They want to get some sense of backing that up. Everyone would like to say it's nice, but if we could come up with how that would help us grow our city and improve the economy, that would help, wouldn't it?
Well, so I, I think for, for daytime train. In specific, are you thinking more of commuters or are you thinking of like people who may want to do like a day trip up here? Um, from like Sacramento or like a weekend thing?
Well, I'm just thinking right now, the only way you can get a train in and out of here is to be up at two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Right? And, and so, I mean, I think that severely limits us. And so if it was going to come in a day and then leaving and, you know, if it, there was a noon one. That would kind of balance out the evening ones, all I'm thinking.
Yeah, I know it's kind of creepy to leave and get back. And I think the train returns pretty early in the morning too, pretty.
Early.
Yeah.
Seven, eleven for the times.
Okay.
Thereabouts.
Yeah, and I think as a, as a woman, it's not the most conducive to want to wait at a train station. Super late at night.
Exactly. Yeah.
Well, I, I think it'd be wonderful if. I mean, I, I don't know what the cost analysis looks like, but you know, given that Dunsmere does have a high number of commuters already. If, if we could have a regular service to Reading and back, um, during business days. And with enough time in between to fulfill business hours down there, I feel like that could benefit our community a lot. And then conversely, if we had plans that are trains that were specifically designed to go from. High population centers and arrive Friday night and leave Sunday afternoon. Um, that would also be of enormous benefit to our town. But I don't know if that's even remotely feasible.
I think they're, I think they're just looking for pie in the sky right now of, you know, if, if, if we were to get a bunch of money, the feds or the state, what would we prefer to do?
I feel like Reading's right down the line. Um, it's a much larger employment center and population base. And theoretically, if they overhaul the whole system, there'll be a lot more train options there.
How do you guys feel about the train station itself?
I, I, I think Carrie Green did a lot of work.
No, I, I think that's. The perfect question. Because in the last 12 months. We had a woman passenger. Who was accosted in the middle of the night at our railroad station, had all of her luggage stolen in her purse. And for the 12 years or 13 years I've been up here, it's not even a nonprofit. It's the. Railroad station supporters. It's an elderly group that is dying off. And so there is really no voice to preserve. The rail station in Dunsmere, which was a historical. The rail station in Dunsmere, which was a historical accident from the steam era. But we're totally at risk for losing. The status of being the last stop in California before you're in Klamath Falls, Oregon. So. I do think we need to somehow meet with what's left. Of the citizen voices to save the railroad station. And talk about a budget for cleaning the bathrooms, for security, for upkeep of the station. And. As an old hand that was around when Southern Pacific had the spill in nineteen ninety one. Part of the remediation effort was to run excursion trains. Between Reading and Dunsmere, they were extremely successful. But then they shut them down because we've done our bit to make it up to the city of Dunsmere. But I think there's whether it's electrified or diesel. Railroad transportation is going to pay a big part in the future of Northern California. And the corridor from Mexico to Canada. And if we don't. Give a reason for keeping a station in Dunsmere and what it takes to keep the station safe and clean and nice. Then we're going to lose it. So I hope we move forward on this issue. Thank you.
Are there the other suggestions or input? From council?
I was just gonna say, Peter, do you know anyone in specifically who would be the contact for the volunteer group who does the cleaning and stuff?
Like a quasi member, I believe.
Yeah, feel free to talk to me.
Okay.
I am very much part of the society.
Phyllis Calco.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Phyllis Calco is a perfect example. Her husband passed away. He was an absolute stalwart. And. We're not replacing. The heart and soul of our railroad history as far as the station. Thank you.
Geez, Blake, I wonder how you got talked into that. How did you get talked into that, Blake?
Yes, it's I love it. It's great.
He said I do, right? No, he said I do.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any other? Ideas, comments, input?
I think this is good for me to start and put a letter down with some bullet points so we can put that on the next agenda. So Blake, if you want to let people from that group know. That might have another chance at public comment on that. I think it would be nice to hear from more people. I know I've. Talked to a couple of people about this item and they've given me a a couple of pieces of input, but I think it would be lovely to get more, especially volunteer group.
Sure, yeah, I have any at all right now. And yeah, I know that they're very enthused and excited about keeping the station there and. A lot of hard work goes into it. They just repainted some of the museum aspect, and I know that's got some of Dunsmere history in it. Which is not necessarily part of the Amtrak station, but it is one building and it it is all kind of tied together. So there is.
That will be a three hour feed.
Well, and and. Big Dave and others will remember that for years and years, Phyllis Calco was regarded as the pie queen. And it was her genius that started railroad days. They sold pies. Everybody contributed pies. And they raised thousands of dollars. For the railroad terminal that's gone now.
Actually, I think that was Dogwood days. But it it was it all. It all transferred into. Railroad days now.
Yeah.
Julie, Adam?
What's up, Bruce? Or sorry, Councilmember.
Thank you, ma'am. I I just wanted to add something to the idea of the daytime. It it strikes me that. You could look at the whole county as being benefited if there was a chance for tourists on a train to come through this region. You know, in other words, right now, if you're dry, if you're taking Amtrak, you're not going to see us at all. You know, because it's dark the whole time you're coming through. So having some sort of service that would let people know that we've got this beautiful area. Boy, I'd like to come here and I can stop at Dunsmere, I think would really be helpful for our economy.
Especially at five dollars a gallon of gas, you know?
Yep, yep. All right. Do you have at least an okay beginning for this item?
Yeah. And again, you know, if you know anybody else who's super interested in this. You know, reach out to them and and get some input from them and we can always, you know, add to that letter at the next meeting.
Thank you so much. Let's move into our item B of old business, a green waste day discussion. City manager?
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you. A little bit of background. I spoke to Diana from Clemmons and, you know, trying to see if we could pull together another green waste day. And. And rightfully so, she is stating that. She's not willing to donate any more time from her staff or nor to put. A bin up at, you know, the ballpark in order to haul it without being compensated. And to do this work, it's a minimum of five thousand dollars. And it may be more. We just haven't priced it out, but her suggestion is why aren't we putting green waste in the bags that that are available to our citizens? So that's where we are, and that's just to set the stage for, okay, so what do, how do we pivot from this?
Right. So you said a minimum of five thousand? Is it adjustable?
Correct. That's that was just Diana's estimate based on past years.
Well, five thousand dollars to clean houses and nothing compared to the. You know?
Yeah, I mean, she made a pretty good point and, you know, I don't know. I mean, again, you guys, you'll have your own opinions on this. Is it's her concern that if we have a green waste day, what that means is folks will wait for that green waste day. And let everything pile up as opposed to removing. You know, fuel, fire, you know, fuel for fires as they build up on their own and take that drive to the transfer station. I know it's more convenient to have it done here, definitely.
Yeah.
In the past, we've done a trash day and a green waste day. And in. Realistically, the town got cleaned up. Tremendous. I mean, Dan Padilla was happy.
The the trash day has always been very impactful. But is this separate from that in terms of cost? This is just the.
This is just, this is just green waste. So, you know, we need to determine, can we fit this into our budget? You know, on an ongoing basis and do we want to or do we want to pass the individual? You know, responsibility on to property owners, I guess, is the the best way to phrase it.
Question? Yes, Councilman Deutsch.
Thank you. Todd, are we talking, you mentioned something about bags. Are there bags that a citizen could use to put green waste into the regular pickup or am I misunderstanding there?
That's what Diana said there, that there have been green waste bags available for some time and that she also mentioned that in a response to the RFP.
Well, that could be the problem is we just don't know that. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
How much stuff can you get in a little bag when we're talking about trimming your trees? I mean.
I think that I think that goes back to a bigger thing is that woody. So green waste isn't all considered green waste. Woody material. You have to already sort that out in most cases before taking it to the transfer stations or processing, not greenways. So if it's in like leaves and, you know, trimmings and stuff like that, we could, that's a lot easier to deal with. It's when we start getting that big woody material that you start getting a higher and higher cost. So I I don't, I don't know if that's something we want to maybe talk about in terms of, you know, maybe just doing like a leaf pickup or a grass clippings pickup, but you know, that might be reduce the overall cost. Because woody material is just the harder one to deal with and it's heavier for transportation costs.
And it burns more.
Well, I mean, it it depends. I mean, it it burns differently. So your grass clippings, your leaves are. They'll burn quickly, but they'll burn out. Or your woody material is what's going to burn for a longer period of time, which is why, again, you put wood in your fire stove and not grass clippings, because the grass clippings will just go poop. And immediately ignite and be done because it has a short fuel load. So it it kind of it all, it all attributes to vegetation management as a whole.
All right. I think that, you know, we should probably defer it to the finance committee who's discussing the budget. Whether we could fit either one or two of these days into it. But let's just, I guess, move forward and discuss whether we think it's. You know, a value enough to expend that amount. And then follow up and make sure we can afford it. Because last year we weren't in a position to be able to afford that.
So as a just a follow up, so. You know, if we're going to have the conversation at the finance committee, I just want to make just generally poll the council. So are we looking for a free? Green waste pickup or are we looking for reduced costs? Like, are you looking for something where everybody just drops their stuff off at the bin and Clemmons takes it up? Or are we?
I vote for a free green waste day.
So you want it. So you want it free. So if we did happen to look at the budget and say, oh, well, we could do. Two thousand dollars and then just charge people five dollars flat rate, you would not be okay with that.
I'd be fine with that.
I'd be okay with a five dollar rate, but we need to clean house.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, it's fine. Yeah, we can schedule it for finance committee and look at what's available and and report back to council with what we're able to handle or recommend that we can handle.
But but I would, I guess, follow up with, I know this isn't exactly where it was going, but if we could also resurrect the free trash day. You know. I feel like that would certainly help the code enforcement efforts in terms of the carrot and the stick, providing the. Or at least a reduced trash day, perhaps.
So are you? So again, are you looking for free and reduced at the transfer station? Are you looking for a drop off location?
I'm looking for a drop off location in one of the city parking lots.
Yeah. Right on, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to be really clear.
Peter, me and you have done this for a few years and you got to admit, sir, this was a good thing. We cleaned house.
Yeah, I are we done with public comment? Well, let me wait until public comment and I'll respond.
Okay. Was there any more questions regarding it? Let's open up a public comments for green waste day discussion in the city of Dunsmere. Same as before, if you're in person here, just come to the podium, really. Or if you're on Zoom, hit star nine if you're calling in, go to the dispense tab and hit the raise your hand button.
Hello, this is White Bailey again, five nine oh six Castle Avenue. I just recently took some green waste there, the dump. They are very, very cautious of what is green and what's brown. Green waste, they want you to cut it and deliver it that day. I've been hauling things like berry bushes, which are a lot easier for me to cut. Place, let them dry out and take them. As such, I have to take it to the not the normal place to dump, but I have to put it in the nor the regular landfill. Their machine was broke down the other day and that building was literally twelve, no, twenty five feet high of debris. With only their ability to clean out enough for future trucks to come in and immediately remove that. So it is something that understand that if we do have a parking lot full of material. And it's not green on the day we may be green the day we deliver, by the time they take it there, there may be an added cost to that. That should be a consideration as to what is green waste because. It's not just lumber. Of course, it's not green waste, but the fact is they are happy to get very tight up there right now.
Are there any people on the Zoom call? Let's see. Thank you, are there any? All right, I see none. I will close public comment on this and I believe Councilman, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, and I want to respond to both Councilmember Keisler and Councilmember Deutsch. And I'm very, very pleased that we. Assembled an ad hoc committee. I don't think Juliana and I will solve everything. But at least we will get to sit down with the city manager that inherited a contract. Between the city of Dunsmere and Clemmons Waste Disposal that dates to drumroll nineteen seventy three. Yeah, of course, in nineteen seventy three, we didn't worry about electronic waste. We didn't worry about green waste. We didn't worry about recycling metal or glass. So all of these are new topics. But Todd put together, at least for members of the committee, and I encourage other members of the council to get the same packet we got. And it shows that the Black Butte Transfer Station. Does discriminate in dump fees. If it's green waste, it's less expensive. Than regular garbage and like Councilmember Deutsch. I never knew there was an option for a green waste disposal. Option in Dunsmere. So in San Francisco, from whence I came. We had black bins, we had green bins, we had blue bins. And that discriminated between recyclable garbage. Recyclable tins and metals and glass and pure garbage. And. From when I first started at the council. There are a number of residents, fixed income or not, that would like to be able to dispose. Of old couches, old TVs, green waste. Not everybody has a pickup and can go up to the Black Butte Transfer Station. So I really hope we update from nineteen seventy three to twenty twenty three. I don't blame Clemmons. But if you look at the old contract and the RFP response. For instance, all of the restaurants in town, there's supposed to be a program to deal with fats and oil and grease. Do we have that kind of a program? No, we don't. Clemmons says, if you want to get a vendor to deal with that, okay, but we're not going to do it. Well, those are issues where if our budget recovers. Again, we can be a model community in how we dispose of our waste and protect the environment at the same time. So to me, this is not even the beginning of the end. This is just the beginning. But I hope when we meet on the night, we can start meeting the concerns of business and residences to responsibly get rid of our waste. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any further thoughts on the green waste day among members of council?
I think I think the bigger thing, you know, that I think about is. The Siskiyou County just had a bunch of reduced waste drop off days at Black Butte for green waste and they expanded their earth day. So I'm just really kind of curious, you know, if the county does put up, you know, these free waste days up there, you know, is it really a transportation issue for people in Dunsmere? Is it just a give them a longer heads up that this is happening? You know, maybe, maybe it might be good for us to take a step back and and just kind of assess and go, you know, what are really the barriers to people doing more vegetation management on their property? I don't know if maybe people have other issues, you know, like, for example. Just for my house individually, you know, it's going to be expensive for me to do a significant amount of tree work because we have a lot of trees. So is cost a prohibitive thing for people cleaning up dead trees or dying trees? Is it actually being able to get a truck in to haul it, you know? You know, I think having the free green waste day is a good idea. I just think. You know, we might be able to do something better by a better understanding what people need because again, if people are needing transportation. You know, maybe there are other programs we can look at. you know, maybe there are other programs we can look at instead of doing a Clemens Green Waste Day, um, and just relying on that and maybe looking at, you know, what would it cost to have a couple of people have special insurance on their trucks and have them available by phone call for a month, you know, and pay them for that. Kind of similar to the, um, senior snow removal program up in Mount Chasta. They basically just hire a number of contractors with the equipment and insurance able to help these people out. And then people register and schedule for when those people are going to do that service. So just, you know, thinking about other options that there, there might be other barriers to people doing vegetation management than just having a free day for it. Um, something to maybe think about and maybe ask around to the people who are having issues with vegetation management. Um, and just say, you know, what would be the most helpful for you? And maybe there are different ways that we could do it that are less cost intensive as a city.
Yeah. And one thing I'd like to point out, if, if people aren't aware of it as well, is currently you can purchase from the city, um, orange stickers, uh, for larger items in addition to your trash can. So if you have like, say your TV or your couch, Clemens will remove it. You just have to pay the sticker and, um, it's not, it's a mountable amount. I think it's a couple of dollars per sticker. So maybe we could issue some of those one month, you know, five, five of those to each citizen and that might work well, using the infrastructure we already have in place in Clemens.
Question for Juliana, as we keep talking about regional approaches to regional problems, I look at the South Landing in the city of Mount Chasta, and it looks like a lot of green waste, brown race, waste is stacking up there. Is the city of Mount Chastis come up with better ideas than we have so far?
No, um, actually Mount Chastis does a lot less for the green waste than what Dunsmere does. Um, the main thing that you're seeing on that property is they're doing a finning project. So they're actually doing vegetation management on the property and then just burning on the property. I know that they did have a green waste day after a big storm a couple of years back, and this was before working with the city of Mount Chastis. So I don't have all of the details for what that was. And a gentleman came in with a chipper, a masticator and, um, ended up doing that for free and volunteering. Um, someone threw an engine block into it with the wood weight and the chipper. And so the gentleman no longer wants to do that for the city of Mount Chastis, which is frankly reasonable if people aren't going to follow the rules. One of the issues with having one of those localized things, and I think one of the large costs to Clemens doing the pickup is you have to make sure people aren't putting other things into the green waste. So again, you have to have people available to look at what they're putting in to make sure someone isn't putting in metal, someone isn't putting in toxic things that when they go to burn the, um, uh, wood waste or wood byproduct, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of, of manpower, human power that goes into, um, some of these days. And that's where you get some of the costs adding up. That's why I was thinking if people, you know, maybe we can rethink how this works. And if people just want to do like a, call up a, a truck contractor and have your green waste taken away in the month of June, you know, that way the people who are in the trucks can, are, are there helping load. They can make sure that it's the right materials. People aren't putting additional weights and cost. So I, you know, there's, uh, Mount Chastis is not doing much either. Um, so I, but you know, I've, I've worked with a number of other cities in Wisconsin and Minnesota, which are also very timber heavy. Um, and I've worked with, um, uh, I was a prairie enthusiast, which sounds really dorky, but it's actually really fun.
Sure.
And yeah, so we basically took care of native prairies in the Midwest. And one of the things we always talk about is, um, I've been on a couple of prescribed burns and green waste, you know, programs through that. So there's a lot of really cool things that we can do. I just, you know, I just wanted to bring up earlier, you know, maybe, you know, we'll definitely look into the recommendation or the, um, charge to finance committee to look for funds to do this. I think it is a worthwhile venture, but maybe we need to start talking to people more about why they didn't take advantage of the county's reduced waste days, or why they didn't take advantage of the free trash day on Earth Day. And maybe there are, maybe we can glean something out of that information to do a better program for the city in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I'd like to weigh in with my thoughts on this, and that is that I like the idea of, of establishing a team of people that we get, um, you know, the insurance for and everything else like Julian was mentioning. And I'm sure there are people out there that have the passion for this, that we could work with them and develop a, an approach and the same thing as with the snow removal. I mean, both of those really kind of go hand in hand. And, you know, looking at it from the standpoint of the resource center, there's always that sense of how do we deal with the less fortunate out there? And I think rather than putting it on either the transfer station or on Clemens, we could come up with a way to do this in our community where maybe on Saturdays at different times, a team can get a call and go out. I just want to support that idea because I think it's an idea worth exploring.
Okay. Uh, perhaps maybe you could reach out. Um, I don't know if it's something on Facebook or within the community and see if maybe you can put together a group of, I don't know, half a dozen or so people that would be committed to that sort of thing.
I'll, I'll take that on. Yeah, I'll do that.
Bruce, put my name at the top of the list.
Yeah, I figured. Tim Pierce too, right?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll do that. I'll follow up and get back to the all.
All right. So I think where we're leaving this item is, um, Councilman Deutsch is going to look into trying to gather a citizens group with the truck idea and finance committee is going to consider what we can afford this year. I, I guess the only further thought I would give is, you know, we, we can't do something this year that's not sustainable for further years financially. So whatever we do, I, I'm a real fan of kind of going along with Councilman Casey and figuring out what the most cost effective manner of achieving our ends are. So, um, let's move into new business. You'll remember we moved the public notice item regarding CDBG loan programs, um, or funding, sorry, to this. Um, city manager, would you like to take it away?
Sure. Um, so what will be coming back next time is a resolution in support of using our program income for, um, or at least one item. And that is to, uh, take some of that program income and leverage it to seek $250,000 in planning money, uh, that, that can be used to, you know, um, show that we're, um, meeting national objectives in terms of creating jobs in low moderate income communities. And the two things that I've mentioned before are an economic, um, uh, revitalization plan for the city. You know, like what are the kind of signage that, what is the kind of signage we need out for my fiber in the city? What are our approaches to the city look like? What kind of street furniture, um, you know, and facades? What should they look like? What do we need to do to make our, um, downtown, you know, besides the vacant distress building ordinance to make it more attractive to local businesses and, you know, uh, market certain sites for, um, national change that fit with, um, the desires of the members of the community in Dunsmere. So, um, then coupled with, if we can get the price in place, a three-year contract, um, with a firm like Retail Strategies, we'd have to go out to an RFP. Um, so there may be somebody that's better to actually go out, um, with a firm that has a lot of contacts nationally and locally to actually physically go out and recruit, um, the right kind of business that would fit for Dunsmere and that a, uh, retailer that is looking for a community of our size and has the attributes of being on I-5. So that's one piece. Now we have program income that we can use, um, that has the, so we fill out what's called a program income application. And that's using any money that we've gotten back from EDBG or CDBG this year over and above 35,000. And we've got a considerable amount. And those, we have a little wider latitude in how we can use the money. And so some things that, um, you know, I've thrown out there that we could do is, um, you know, one of the main things is, you know, um, is to see if we can get the library re-roofed, that we, um, get some help for Stephen Bryan over at the Community Resource Center in terms of, um, getting him reimbursed for some of his costs during COVID. Um, but there's also a county program that might be able to help them and that might be something we can take off the list. Two others is the potential to fix the bleachers, which are absolutely an embarrassment. And, um, seeing if we can expand, uh, expand Hedge Creek Parking and potentially meter it so we get turnover, say every two or every three hours, little money in the process, but then we give people an opportunity to go see the falls, but not hang out all day. And avoid people parking along Mott, um, you know, where there is no fall.
That's critical.
Yeah.
That's critical. It's going to be a big project and I think we all as a group haven't really turned and faced yet that we're going to need to come up with some solution to parking there. That's not going to be easy.
I also want to put this in there. If we charge for parking and people pay it, then I get a, I get a, a different type of people coming.
Yes.
I got people that aren't pissing in the woods and are, you know, you know, uh, uh, just a different caliber. Bernie Falls charges.
It's so, so we can alleviate, potentially alleviate the issue that, um, Hedge Creek and, well, Mossbury is not ours, but Hedge Creek doesn't smell like a urinal in early June and on through the summer.
Good work, Todd. Thank you.
Yeah. And one of, and one of the things for Hedge Creek too, you know, uh, in the discussion with the Trails Association and some of the parks grants that are coming forward, um, part of those parks grants would involve some public outreach so that we can definitely work on the Hedge Creek parking piece a, a lot more and, and see what other things that people have. So yeah, we can definitely elaborate on that more.
Uh, I'm pretty sure that the property around Hedge Creek belongs to the city because that's part of the water plant property thing.
Yes.
Across the street is Caltrans.
So there's a couple of things. We, um, did a search, uh, in that section where there currently is parking right by where the crosswalk is. Um, initially appeared to be the county, but when we contacted Craig K, he's found some old documents that he needs to do some research on that some of that land that's being used for parking, um, and not being used for parking that are treed right now may have been transferred to the city. So we need to find that out.
Oh, booyah.
So, right. And there is a parcel that city owned right where the trailhead is that, um, that there's a potential that we could squeeze in like four or so spaces there as well.
Yeah, but you know, the numbers we're talking about, we have to expand. I think we still haven't faced the idea. When you look at the number of cars that were parked along Mott Road this last weekend.
Totally agree.
We need to come up with something that's going to take a large number, not four or five extra spaces. So that's what the challenge is going to be.
Okay. Um, well, so this will come back as a resolution slash second reading. Uh, our next meeting. So there's a chance for everybody to look at it. And I'm sure it'll be on the city website for more info on it. But, um, if anyone would like to make a public comment now on this item, please come forward or raise your hand. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make public comments?
I don't see anybody.
All right. Um, seen none. We'll close public comment and, um.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Well, we do have future agenda items. I know there's a lot coming up on, uh, city's end. It will have to be there through, through business.
Yeah, I think, um, so I requested, uh, city manager Yu Haas to put together that bullet point list of what he's got going on right now, just because I know, um, it's kind of the start of grant season in terms of a lot of grants coming up and different projects we would have to be ready to apply for. Plus we're still administering some of the other grants. And so I'm, I'm hoping, Todd, if you're, you're comfortable with it, I can share your bullet point list with the rest of council. Just because we do have, excuse me, just because I don't want to overload our staff, city staff, um, all of our, you know, efforts and these different programs that we're advocating for are really, really worthwhile and meaningful. Um, I don't want to overload city staff or put us in a position where we start something and it just doesn't, it's not the quality of work that I would prefer to see. Um, I'm, I'm a firm believer of doing a, a couple of things very well as opposed to doing everything okay. Um, you know, so I just wanted, I, I might share that with everybody just so that you know that we've, we've got quite a few projects in the works right now and we need to be strategic about, you know, what we're prioritizing and moving forward with. Um, and, and Peter, I, I do still have your visioning stuff. I've put in a couple of requests for assistance, um, in funding for those to make sure we have a really robust, uh, system. Um, so, um, I know that a lot of our projects, you know, some of these, it just, it takes a lot of time, brain power to put them together and, and we don't necessarily have an unlimited resource of that.
Yeah. Like to bring up at this point?
Well, I do.
That's what I.
Well, simply to build on Juliana's point, which I appreciate, the one chip that I think the city put out to our business community in the name of economic redevelopment is that we would have a listening session, understanding that the chamber of commerce is not a player in our community at this point. Business really has no voice in our community. Couldn't we go forward in advance of planning and visioning to at least listen to the incumbent and new businesses for a couple of hours facilitated or not? What do they think in the name of economic development, the city should be prioritizing? I, I hope that happens in the next six years.
Yes, Councilman Deitch?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that every time that there's a statement made in the city council meetings, that the chamber is this or the chamber is that, is not helping the chamber and it's not helping the business community. You can say what you want to about the struggles they're going through, but bringing it up and castigating them for not doing this or that doesn't help things.
I'm not chastising anybody, Mr.
You're saying they're not functional.
But I'm talking to Mark Rowley and I'm talking to Cindy Foreman, and I get no suggestion that the chamber is going to reorganize, develop a budget, hire an executive director anytime soon.
Well, gentlemen, I, I want to put stop to the conversation about the chamber. It's not on the agenda. Um, you know,
Exactly.
In general, though, uh, we have been discussing having a meeting with the business community of Dunsmere, um, and the chamber is a topic to discuss with them. But more importantly, just what means are most effective, chamber bid, et cetera, um, for fulfilling their goals and needs. But most importantly, a listening session, hearing what they think the best next steps are. So I think, uh, in general, we can all get behind Councilman Art's sustained future agenda.
Thank you.
So, um, with that, um, and we will have an ample time and place to discuss the chamber, preferably with members of the chamber, of course. So, um, there's no other future agenda items. We could certainly entertain adjournment.
Go big Dave.
I move to adjourn.
I'll sack it.
There we go.
All right. Uh, motion in a second. All those favors say aye.
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 Aye. Against? Motion carries unanimously. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Wonderful evening. See you guys all on the 17th.